All right, let's go ahead and we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. It's June 25th. It's our regular school board meeting. James, would you please take attendance?
Yep, Dr. President Reese, or President Dr. Reese, say that the right way?
President.
Vice President Madonna?
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Trustee Schultz is absent, and Trustee Whitney?
Here.
Great. All right, we're going to go ahead and move through the agenda. Item number two, I do not have any changes to the board agenda. I think we got the policies added, right? That was the only thing I want to make sure that got done. Yes, they're on there. Good. All right, we had no scheduled comment, Kelly? Okay. All right, I did not receive any either. All right, number four on the agenda is consent agenda items. We have the minutes of the June 11th, 2024 meeting, HR hire recommendation, and bills payable for May 2024. Can I get a motion? Amanda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support James. Any discussion? I just want to make a quick comment. Great work to everyone. I saw all of the HR recommendation hires for all of our new classrooms for special education. It makes me really excited that we're really cruising forward on all of that plan in action, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, superintendent's report. Dr. Milligan.
All right, good evening, everyone. First thing I want to start out with, last time I was here, I talked about the opportunity for the community to give input on activities for me to do to get to know the area. I've been working with our communications department to set those up and to go out to these events. So I would like to show two videos. The first video is the introduction that we put out on Facebook to let families and community members know that they could give input, so we'll share that first. Go ahead. Officer, this is Dr. Tanya Milligan, your new superintendent of Oxford Community Schools. I am brand new to Oxford, and I'm excited to get to know Oxford and the community and the surrounding areas. So we're hoping that you can give me some ideas, make some recommendations of things you think I should do, or places I should go, to get to know Oxford and the surrounding area and the community even better than what I'm experiencing now. So there is a link below this video that will take you to a Google form. I hope that you take a moment and you submit either something you want me to do, or a place that you want to go. We'll post where I'm going, and you can join me along with other community members in experiencing something fun and exciting in Oxford or the surrounding area that'll help me get to know Oxford and the Oxford community. I appreciate you taking the time. So that was the introduction to the opportunity. We had hundreds of recommendations of things for me to do, so I would be a very busy person. One of the ones we selected early on was going to OES, having lunch with families and the staff there, and then walking over to Frosty Boy. Apparently, that's an icon in the community. So we did that. We went to OES, had a wonderful lunch, and had some ice cream, so we have a second video that shows that experience. Hello, Oxford community. This is Dr. Tanya Milligan, the new superintendent of the Oxford Community Schools. Here at Oxford Elementary School, here to enjoy lunch with our students and our families, our littlest students. I'm so excited. Food and services and student lunches have just been a favorite of mine. Patty in the food services department, her whole department does an amazing job with food, so I'm excited to go in here. I understand the chicken tenders are wonderful, so I'm definitely going to be having some chicken tenders, and I'm excited about it. And then, of course, going to Frosty Boy. Excited for that as well. Let's go on. School chocolate milk is truly the best. Delicious. I'm hungry. Are you hungry? Yeah. Did you need chocolate milk? I got chocolate milk. Thank you, Patty. That was delicious. Oh my gosh. So, great day here in Oxford. Had a chance to have a wonderful lunch with parents and children, teachers. It was amazing. We had a lovely walk over here to Frosty Boy. Wonderful company to hang out with and talk about thoughts around Oxford, thoughts about schools, all sorts of things, and especially hang out in this very, very hot day, but loving every minute of it. So thank you, Oxford, for the opportunity. I look forward to more wonderful adventures, getting to meet different people, and going to different places. Right, so that was a fun event. Got to talk to a lot of people. Ice cream was delicious, highly recommended. And this week, we went to Leonard yesterday. They had a reading and math program that we met students and parents and teachers, and that was really fun. And then Wednesday, we go to Eris Bookstore from 5:30 to 6:30, so please join me for books, talking, coffee, all the wonderful things, and we'll have video of those opportunities at the next board meeting. So thank you to Christie Smith. She's been taking care of the video, doing a wonderful job. And it's just really been a great opportunity to get to know people of Oxford. Everyone has been incredibly welcoming towards me and gracious and supportive, and so I really appreciate that. The first item on the superintendent report is the recovery plan. I have a team of leaders here to talk about the update, and we start with, I think Todd is at the beginning. Yes, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. So for the recovery plan update, we're going to kind of go in groupings here. I'm going to start, and let me see. I gotta get our clicker going. There we go. And so I'm going to start. Dr. Russell is going to join me once I get through a few slides here. She's going to cover some of our PBIS and MTSS information. So our mental health services by the numbers are partner with Oxford Addison Youth Assistance. This slide just demonstrates that really their case management services are up. They do their annual reports January 1st through December 30th, so that's how these are set up by the calendar year, not necessarily by the school year, but you can see that they have really pivoted since COVID back in 2021 in order to address our needs as a district. Their services prior to that looked a little different, and they've really made some adjustments. And I'll cover that a bit more when we get to our community partners section. Our Wildcat Pack is going strong. We've got 12 therapy dogs and 24 handlers. That's 12 primary handlers and 12 secondary handlers. So each one of our dogs has a primary and a secondary handler. If our primary handler can't be in for some reason, that dog sustains its daily schedule in each of the classrooms that it's scheduled to be in with that secondary handler. So they continue on with their responsibilities. We've got almost 12,000 classroom visits this school year. Over 96 different school and community events that our dogs have been part of, so we're excited about that. We've really built our intervention grid, and Dr. Russell will talk more about that. But Trails to Wellness is one of those Tier One interventions that we provide all of our kids at the secondary level, and that required us to obtain a grant through Oakland Schools, and they provided training for some of our lead teachers. And those teachers went on to train all of our secondary staff to implement the Trails to Wellness Tier One instructional content. And it's really a nice curriculum resource that supports building relationships, some of our social needs around our kids, developing some of those skills, and things of that nature. So we do break down the number of staff at each building that were trained in order to provide this particular resource. Second step in bullying prevention is provided at our elementary classrooms throughout the district. We've provided over 2,200 classroom lessons. Those were facilitated by our family-school liaisons across the district. And we get wonderful reports from our students and our staff regarding the skills that our kids are building through this curriculum resource. It again is a Tier One resource, which means all of our students get this basic skill-building instruction throughout their school days. We also introduced suicide awareness training certification. And what we did for all of our ninth and 10th grade students is North Oakland Community Coalition, which is known as NOCC, one of our community partners, provided QPR training, which stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer. And all of our ninth and 10th graders had two class sessions that was part of their health class this spring, and every one of our ninth and 10th graders were certified in suicide awareness, training, and prevention. We are going to grow that next year. Our intent is to grow that into our middle school based on national data. The numbers really demonstrate a need, beginning in middle school, for this knowledge. So we're hoping to push this into our health classes at the 7th grade and maintain it at the 9th and 10th grade level for next school year. And then some of our community partners. One thing that I'd like to stress is that although we talked about a couple of these, Oxford Addison Youth Assistance is a longstanding community partner. They've partnered with the school district for over 60 years. We celebrated that this year with them. As you saw, they continue to increase their casework services. And Stacy Williams just has done an excellent job with meeting the needs of our students, whether it's elementary or secondary. They've also partnered with us for Parent University, which Ms. Conja Collins is going to talk about a little bit later, but they put on a very successful parent university over at our Early Childhood Program, probably one of our most successful parent universities of the school year. Our Wildcat Pack is, I want to highlight that we continue to sustain that program through community donations. It's not funded through the general fund, and so we're going to continue to build that platform of how do we maintain? When we did our year-end handler meeting this year, that was one of our focuses. How do we maintain that community support through donations to sustain those 12 facility dogs? Caitlin Mulberg does a wonderful job as our district lead handler with that. Trails Tier One, I mentioned it, and we are expanding that grant with Oakland Schools to include Tier Two training, which will be for our mental health staff. So our mental health staff will be getting that Tier Two training for Trails, which will give them one more resource to use at that Tier Two level with select students that need that extra support. So they'll be receiving that training over the summer, actually. They've signed up, and they're prepared to partake in that training. And then our second step lessons, which we talked about, we're really, next year, we're expanding that, and we're going to be providing extension lessons within our classrooms for our teachers to help facilitate. So oftentimes, in a true Tier One model, we want our classroom teachers to embrace a lot of these concepts and integrate them into what they're already doing, and so our FSLs are actually developing a menu for teachers to select from in order to provide extension lessons as part of that. So the one thing I'd like to mention is that the Office of Victims of Crime identifies our district as an organizational victim related to our tragedy, and therefore, our school community has needed to develop and expand many of the partnerships that I just referenced. And it's important that we're able to really partner with those organizations in the community. So some of the logos that I've got listed here, I just wanted to mention. Easter Seals has been a great partner. They continue to provide co-located services, not only at our middle school and high school, but they expanded to our Early Childhood Center, and they've been doing a great job this year. And we also created the same model, and I reported out to all of you, that we created a partnership with Better Life Counseling. And they're going to be really providing the mirrored services at OMS and OHS. They started this spring. And Better Life Counseling just hired Megan Van Sickle, who had served our district as a social worker for over 30 years. She retired, and they hired her to come back and provide services, similar services, K-12 next year. So she's a familiar face. She's a highly qualified mental health professional, and we're going to be able to expand those services through our Better Life Counseling partnership for any of our students that need counseling throughout next school year. So it'll be a great resource. The one thing that I'd like to mention is we've covered many of these. A couple that I'd like to reference is 42 Strong. We're continuing to partner with their mentorship program. They provide a resource in our community, and we support them with their annual recruitment for both mentors and mentees, both at the high school and the middle school, which has been a very successful partnership. Many of our students enrolled in our leadership and mentorship classes led by Emma Gordon Brown are also involved in 42 Strong, so it's been a nice connection for those kids to kind of lead the recruitment efforts in our partnership with them. Another community partner that I want to reference is Journey Lutheran, which is a faith-based organization that's not only partnered to assist individual families during personal tragedies in our community, but Pastor Matt has really, they've got $150,000 Care for Oxford Fund, and they've dispersed over $100,000 to families in reimbursement costs for mental health services across our community. So they are a wonderful resource as a community partner for us and our families. So with that, I would like to bump over to Parent University. Ms. Conja Collins.
Thank you. So as you know, we took a little leap of faith in introducing Parent University to Oxford Community Schools this year. I think it's safe to say we were overly ambitious, offering 22 workshops, nine of which were recovery-focused. And I say ambitious because it's probably more than any district around us is doing as far as Parent University. To be fair and transparent, some were more attended than others, and so we're learning a little bit about what it takes to have more attendance. Childcare was a big piece of it. I think food was a big piece of it, or events that parents or families can attend with their children, things that they can do together. As Todd mentioned, one of the most successful events was the one that was put together with, I'm drawing a blank, OELC and Oxford Addison Youth Assistance. They did a series for Love and Logic, and the parents came in a, you know, I think it was a five or six-part series, but again, they provided childcare and pizza, I think, and that really helped keep the parents, but the feedback was that it was very beneficial and that they wanted to continue it. So again, we've learned a lot. I think part of what we are going to do next year is maybe scale it back a little bit, but we want to try something different yet again, and we are going to try to hold a parent education fair in November. Specifically, we're aiming for November 2nd at OMS. With partnership with NOCC, they are going to fund the keynote speaker for the parent education fair. So what we have planned is that it's a Saturday event. We would start with a light breakfast. You know, participants can come, bagels, coffee, something light too, so they can converse and connect with one another. They would participate in a keynote event. The speaker, I think that we're targeting, has spoken at Lake Orion and had very successful attendance there around just anxiety in general. And then there will be breakout sessions along with community resources and vendors. So we're hoping it's like a nine-to-one, nine-to-two type event. And what we're anticipating is this type of event will help community members know what Parent University is more about, and then maybe the other future events will be a little bit more successful. So that's our plan for next school year. This is a project near and dear to my heart. I was a co-chair in my previous district to an event that would attract, by the time I left, there were 500 or 600 people, and that's a goal that I hope to be able to grow here. I think an empowered, educated community makes a huge difference.
Thank you. Well, I want to come back into what we're doing to support our kids within our school community. So I'm going to talk about Tier One Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. This is something that has been a goal of the district for quite a long time, but was also increased after COVID and the tragedy as a way to make sure that our classroom and school environments are really strong and positive for our kids. So what you're seeing here is data that the school teams themselves provide. They go through something like a checklist and use a rubric to rate themselves about how well are they doing with implementing PBIS at this time. It is important to keep in mind that it takes years to implement something like a large school-wide initiative like PBIS. So they rate themselves and make an action plan each year to keep track of how we're doing and keep that moving forward. And you can see that all schools had large improvements in their implementation from last year to this year. What they're trying to do is implement for kids and the whole school to understand what's expected across the building. What should you be doing while you're in our buildings, and how do you be a Wildcat or an Oxford Elementary student? What's really expected of you? And then they also implement really positive, great things that happen for kids when they're displaying those positive behaviors. So it creates a good, strong, positive environment for kids. We also make sure kids understand within that system what to do next if there is a behavior error. How do I fix that, or how do I restore that? So those are the kind of big pieces that they're trying to do there, as well as just make a happy, great place for our kids, where we all are sure of how to act and interact. You can see there's a few schools that have earned their star already after just a few years of implementation. As you do that checklist, if you score yourself 70% or higher on your implementation level, you continue to write an action plan. You continue to move forward and keep working on that Tier One improving and making it innovative and more fun for kids. But after 70% on that score, that really means you've fully implemented the program, and you really should be seeing a difference for kids. And you can see all of our schools are on the trend and on the way there. We're also excited to keep expanding PBIS throughout the district, so the Virtual Academy is working with me on how do we do this in a virtual environment within our lab, but also when we're just interacting with kids through a screen? How do we make sure we have our expectations there, and we have a positive environment for kids? OELC, the Little Littles are working on this as well, and just the high school is ready to roll out next year as well. So it's exciting to see that continue to grow. So Tier One, we want to make sure we have that SCL program like Todd was talking about, that we have an understanding of how to interact within our school, all of those great things, but we know some kids are always going to need more. So we have a couple examples within this PowerPoint of ways we're growing our Tier Two supports or targeted supports for kids that need just a little more support. One of the things we've been growing this year is a program called Cognitive Behavioral Intervention for Trauma in Schools. It's a mouthful, so we normally call that CBITS. It's the acronym for it. This is for 5th or 6th grade up to 12th grade for students who have some sort of trauma in their background, a traumatic life event, and are showing symptoms of depression or behavioral problems. It's not for our kids that are most significant need. Kids who are most significant need really need a one-on-one therapist, probably outside of the school or co-located, maybe some sports in our school, one-on-one with a counselor. But our kids that are doing okay day-to-day, but still are having some of that impact. So Cognitive Behavior Intervention Trauma for Schools, we started this last year and continued in the fall of this year with community therapists coming in and helping to run groups for kids that were selected for this intervention. What we have done now throughout this school year is trained some of our own internal staff to be able to continue this great intervention group that kids who were in it asked if they could be in it again the next year. Kids who were getting the support were saying it had a positive impact for them, so we know it's something we want to continue. We've been able to train five staff at the high school, four staff at the middle school, and all of our FSLs at the elementary in the elementary version called Bounce Back to continue to run this now and in the future. So this year, our own staff at the high school and middle school were able to continue groups and have really positive connections with kids, and it's so great to be running this important Tier Two extra support for kids with someone who they see every day, someone they can still connect to if they need help in between, rather than just, we appreciate the community therapy support as we were getting going, but it's so exciting to grow it to the point we are at now. Within that program, kids are learning things like relaxation, anxiety reduction, problem solving, and just how to keep moving forward, even if something comes up that might bounce them back a little bit, how to keep going forward, and how to get those extra supports in place. To go back to some data, another piece of data we're using this year to help determine who needs those extra supports is an early warning system. So an early warning system is a way of using data that we already have, like attendance, grades, credits, how far are we behind on credits, or are we ahead on credits? Things like that we already have right in front of us to get a holistic look at our children. So we do, right away, if attendance is low, respond. We attend. If there's a discipline issue, we respond right away. But this system brings everything together to help us better understand how much support does a student really need? Are they really an intense need, or is this just a targeted need that's needed? Are they really doing okay? And Tier One, what we're doing for everybody is okay for them. You can see with what we're doing at the high school, a large percentage of our kids really are showing that they're doing okay, and they're having success within our school. We have student relation teams at each alpha level within our high school that's then taking this information and looking at what can they do for their specific students who are in that yellow or in that red, meaning they need a little bit more. Most often, what they're doing is they look through that, they're seeing kids are already involved in an intervention. They're coming to the after-school den to get their grades up. They're already meeting with an FSL to talk about attendance issues, but if anybody on that list isn't already connected, they're making sure to connect them. We have that data again at the middle school and elementary. At middle school and elementary, we add in things like our universal screeners and reading and math, and we get a good idea of what we can do to help. We look at it for the whole building. We also look at it by grade level so that we can tell, is there a way that we need to maybe divert some of our attention to a specific grade level that's maybe having more students in need? And then at our elementary level, same kind of thing. We're really stringent on our expectations of what means that you're doing well at Tier One at the elementary level, though, because this is the level we can have the biggest impact. So you see here a little bit more maybe kids that need a Tier Two or Tier Three intervention. That's intentional because at elementary, if we find these students that are struggling, we can have an even larger, quicker impact because they're young. So we want to set our standards so that we're catching a lot of kids and getting a lot of intervention at this level when we can still do major things for them in short periods of time. So the point here is that we're able to quickly get kids into intervention, but make sure we're looking at them holistically, not just at the reading score, but reading score, along with their social-emotional score, along with their attendance, everything altogether. We're able to get the right things in place for these kids. So we'll keep looking at that across years and across time and keep reacting to that. I'm going to end here with some Sabers information. You've seen me present to you all before on our social-emotional readiness assessment. What I wanted to highlight today for secondary is what we've been seeing across time. So I have data here from fall of 2020 all the way to this last school year's fall results, so showing how are we doing when we came back from COVID, how are we doing as we came back from tragedy, and how are we doing today? And what you can see is that we really are rebounding. Our kids are reporting at the high school back to levels and even a little bit better levels than what we saw when we came back from COVID. So we know that we have some of the right things in place for these kids to support kids who are struggling, and we'll keep working at that. At the middle school level, same thing. As we look at Sabers, we see our results even getting back to higher levels than when we came back from COVID. We know there's a lot still to go for our kids to make sure that some of the educational loss from years ago, some of the different types of education they've had across time, where they were home and in masks and all those different things, that we're still providing the supports that's needed to them, but we're seeing good, strong results from our overall school look across time. At the elementary level, I didn't provide that data from year to year to year because really, it's looking about the same. Every year, we're showing, this one is at the elementary level, it's a teacher report of how are kids doing with their social-emotional readiness. We're really seeing a large percentage of our kids come in every year, ready for academic learning, so that's what's on the left side. And right away, we quickly intervene with kids who are struggling with social, emotional, or academic needs. One of the things I wanted to point out is, doing this year to year to year, we can identify if there's like a cohort or a spot where maybe we need to provide a little bit more attention to. And this year, in our data, we did see that in the fall, our kindergartners had quite a bit of need in a way that we hadn't seen in the past. Teachers were reporting, ooh, there's a lot of social needs here and a lot of emotional needs here that they hadn't seen prior. So right away, our FSLs, other behavioral supports are able to respond to that. We put in all of our buildings, good attention to our kindergartners, and we'll continue to do that for those kids or any other kids or any other group that we see needs additional support. I'm going to end with the fact that we are growing these internal intervention supports. And everything that you could come and talk to me about, whether it's attendance, its behavior, its reading needs, we have a system ready to respond for kids who are in need. So here's just one quick example. At our high school level, when our students are struggling with that social-emotional assessment of Sabers, we right away have a system that everybody knows kicks in right away. We don't wait and scratch our head and say, what are we going to do next? We already know what we're going to do next. So for kids who are showing that little bit of need, our family school liaisons kick in. They do check-in, connect meetings with kids, let them know who their supports are within the building, check in with them. They use this Tier Two information to help select students for groups. They run circles to help these kids get to know others within the building. And then if we have a student that's showing high significant need, right away it kicks in that a counselor will meet with them one-on-one, discuss how things are going, determine any needs that they have that we can address, and parents are called. So those are some things we're doing right away to make sure that we respond to what we see. And you could come to me about anything that we're seeing in our data, and I could tell you what we're doing right away to respond to that. Really proud of the work that's happening across our buildings.
Okay, so looking at safety and security within Oxford, this graphic was seen at the April Safety Forum with one change. We are now officially an Ellis-certified organization. So it is something that took everyone in this district to be able to do. So I'm grateful for all of the paperwork that people had to fill out for me to be able to provide that evidence, the people who went through the training, and our students for participating in our drills. That is something that we had set a goal of this year, and a lot of it was submitting the paperwork and then waiting for them to evaluate, which is why it took us until the end of the year. But we are able to say that we are an Ellis-certified organization. The rest of the numbers remain the same as Ryan and I have both reported. Our Vector Safe Schools training is at 99.3%. Our Ellis training is at 99.6%. And then Ryan also reported in February of this year that we've made an adjustment that before our employees' first day, they will complete this training. So we'll be able to capture people. A lot of this data, why we're not at 100%, deals more with medical leave, other reasons why people may be absent from work at that time. Our BTAM and our Suicide Risk Assessment Teams across the district, we are at 100% trained right now. We do have some staff changes, so we'll have to get that scheduled. But as I've shared, I am a trainer for the NTAC model, so we'll be able to provide that in-house based on our schedule. And we continue to use the NTAC model for threat assessment and the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale for our suicide risk assessment. And that's through the Columbia Lighthouse Project. And there's various methods of our teams being able to receive the training. There's self-paced, there's live webinars, there's in-person training. So that is something that we have them go at that, through that, excuse me, through that, through that, cannot think of the word, I apologize, through that organization. There we go. For Prepare Workshops One and Two, our campus crisis teams remain at 93% changed and are trained, and our district crisis team is at 88%. Some of that, again, is dealing with staffing changes. And for a portion of the year, we're relying on outside organizations to provide that training. But as I've reported before, myself and Mr. Barless, we are both trainers for Workshop One. And then Mark Suckley, Bridget Bitner, and Todd Barless are trainers for Workshop Two. So again, we're not waiting for other people to provide that training. We're able to embed it within our year. And then when we did our exterior door audit in February, we're at 100%. No one was able to enter our building except for the one unlocked door into a secure vest of yule. And so I think that's really important. As we develop a culture of safety throughout this district, that our person who conducted the audit really highlighted a couple of the campus administrative assistants, our Fortis personnel, our security specialists, and just everyone for being vigilant. And it's something that I think we should all be proud of because it's not something my department can do or just Fortis. It takes all of us to do these things. The next update is Raptor. I did bring to you the Emergency Management Visitor Management and Alert piece for your approval. And we shared this during the April Safety Forum and started to talk about it in my February update, but we are transitioning to them really to streamline and strengthen our practices. Raptor checked off a lot of our boxes that we were looking for enhancements to make. One of those, as we've talked about, Alyssa's Law, although it's not currently in place, we know it's in process both at the state and federal level. So that alert is going to be able to give us those silent classroom alarms. Being able to tighten up our visitor management and make things in a way that's going to allow for visitors to check in, our contractors to check in and have specific questions based on their needs. Our emergency management piece for drills, we're reporting requirements for the state. And so being able to have that in one-stop shop, people aren't searching in their Google Drive. They're used to that in the app. As we go through emergency management, being able to comply with our standard response protocol and standard reunification method through the I Love You Guys Foundation that the state is also adopting as a requirement. And then Student Safe will house all of our threat assessment, suicide risk assessment, and bullying investigations next year. The bullying investigations is currently housed in a department-created portal. And then we are currently using Navigate 360 for our threat assessment and suicide risk assessment data. All of that has been downloaded and will be uploaded into Student Safe, so there is still continuation of the data, and we'll be able to provide that for our BTAM teams. And so just so you know, Raptor is used in over 60,000 K-12 schools throughout the country, including Ann Arbor, Novi, Brighton, and then throughout the country, Austin ISD, Seminole County Public Schools, Newtown Public Schools, and Irvine USD. Our weapons detection dog, Daisy, which I thank Kristy for making this look a lot better than I had done. We do continue to own Daisy, where we have a handler from Fortis. And as I've discussed during the April Safety Forum and in my last safety update, Daisy was independently evaluated, determined that she was competent but could benefit from ongoing professional learning, like all of us in this room. So I am happy to tell you that she is, and her handler, they're currently going through it. And both the organization and her handler say that she's doing a really good job, and they're really surprised, not in a great way. Like she's just surprising them every day with all the skills that she's getting. And so we're grateful for that partnership we have with Fortis and being able to continue having Daisy. And Daisy will continue to conduct specific searches as needed throughout the district. And so it's not an every day, every moment. If any of you are familiar with any of the dogs, even our therapy dogs, they need to take breaks. It's a difficult job that they have besides just being adorable and great for us to pet. And this is something that's been shared a lot, but just again, we really rely on see something, say something. And so we've reviewed okay-to-say, and when a tip is received, I know it's very small and hard to look at on this, but we did share it as part of the Safety Forum. So there's a cleaner copy there. But just that reminder that see something, say something. And there's multiple ways that you're able to report anything that seems concerning or suspicious to you. But really understanding that any of your okay-to-say tips, it's a confidential tip going through the Michigan State Police. And they are the ones who determine whether or not the school district receives those tips. We do have a great partnership with them. The two that I talk to in the after-hours, I call it like, hey, how you doing? Because it is the same two MSP officers that I talk to. So they know us, they do start things with, we know who you are, we want to make you aware of this. So they're understanding of that. But just continuing to know how we receive things and what our process is and what that means for us. And so during the school year, I had reported multiple times during my safety updates that we started doing monthly safety and security meetings on each campus. This was a time for anyone associated with the topic, whether it was BTAM, Suicide Risk Assessment, or EOPs, to be able to gather together with myself for about an hour each month. And at the end of the year, I provided a survey to them because I wanted to see, does this matter? I mean, that's a lot of time, and it's time that we're asking people to take away from being in classrooms, if they're observing instruction, if being away from kids. And so really looking at this, how they feel, their knowledge of our threat assessment, suicide risk assessment policies, processes, and procedures. 76.5% said they felt very confident, and 23.5% said they felt confident, and no one said they felt somewhat or not confident at all, which I think is huge. When you look at 100% of our suicide risk assessment and threat assessment teams feel very confident or confident over the policies, procedures, and processes. Looking at knowledge of your crisis response procedures, which is where we get into the Prepare Crisis Response Model, we had 70.6% felt very confident, 27.5% felt confident, and two felt somewhat confident, and zero responded not confident at all. Knowledge of the district's safety policies and procedures, 70.6% felt very confident, 29.4% felt confident, and zero people reported that they felt somewhat confident or not confident at all. And what I feel is important is understanding who to contact because we can't know everything and we can't be the master of everything. And sometimes, do you know who to call? And so 98.1% of the teams said they felt very confident, and we had 1.9% said that they felt confident, with zero saying somewhat or zero, or no confidence at all. Some of the feedback, I gave them different questions about where do they need to grow individually? What are their strengths individually? Where does their team, their campus team, need to grow? And what are their campus strengths? And the only identifying information I have from the survey is what campus they were from because I wanted to honor that anonymity. But at the same time, Clear Lake may have different needs than Lakeville, the high school, and the middle school. So really being able to work with Dr. Russell and Ms. Bitner next year as we really look at the entire continuum of what emergency management is. So really being able to hone in on what each campus's needs are. And so some of the feedback in the open-ended section that I left for them was that these meetings were the single most beneficial part of our improvement since our tragedy in my experience. They go a long way in adding to the feeling of professional value and respect. The ability for teams to have feedback to our district policies and procedures is so appreciated. Another person said, I thought this process was helpful. It provided a safe space to discuss our school process and how to continue to improve as support staff. Overall, having a bridge to district guidelines helped with understanding, asking questions, and leaving meetings with a plan. And I'll read one more for you. It's talking through protocols, practice time in our roles, clarity of expectation and practice, accessing easy-to-use material is very helpful. We've been doing these things, and I think we need to keep doing these things. Whatever we practice, that's usually what we wind up doing in a crisis. And so I think that's really powerful for where our teams are, not only in their recovery, but in their knowledge growth, that having that space that although it does take time away from their traditional jobs, just that culture of safety that we're developing, it's producing results. So some more data. It's going to be in different chunks. So this is the last quarter data for threat assessments. So as you can see, we didn't have any imminent or high priority. We did have 35 screeners from March to June and seven full threat assessments, which were at the minimal and moderate priority level. So the vast majority of our threat assessments for this quarter, and then as you see that we go into the entire year, the vast majority end up in that lower portion. So what we can equate that to, to match along with what Todd and Christine were talking about is when you think about this as Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, your Tier One is your screeners and your minimal priority because they can be supported using universal classroom supports. When we get into moderate priority, that's your Tier Two. They can still access those universal supports that we have, but they might need a little bit more intervention. In a moderate, the individual doesn't appear to pose a risk of violence or serious harm, but the behaviors indicate some greater intervention needs. And then as I spoke about, the two high priority at the high school were two students making threats towards each other. There was not at any time a threat to the greater high school community because their behaviors to each other were escalating, both inside of the school and outside of the school. The team felt it was important for us to pay attention to that and to be able to track it. So that is why we have two high priority threat assessment. So the grand total for the year was we completed 105 screeners and 26 full threat assessments, for a total of 131. And 100% of the time, we inquired about access to lethal weapons. This really was because we had it required within the system, and we will continue to do that. What we really focused on the first half of the year with those safety and security meetings was developing a screener that was going to be thorough because we want everyone to report anything that they find concerning. And let the multidisciplinary team, made up of at least one school administrator, one school-based mental health professional with a master's degree or above, and at least the school resource officer, that is our minimum board policy team, but for them to be able to gather and get all of that information and have that screener and look at, how can we best support this child overall? And so when we look at our suicide risk assessment from March to June, we do see that there are some more high risk. This is managing mental concerns with individuals. And so really looking at what outside supports are we able to get. Dr. Russell and Mr. Barless really talked through things that we're offering at the different tiered levels, whether it's as part of our recovery or just the mental health needs in general. We all know prior to COVID, but COVID really created this environment where, A, we're more aware of it and we're better educated about it. But the children are also exhibiting other signs that they hadn't before. And so really being able to screen a lot of cases, what can we, again, that Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three type support? But having that thorough screening process, following our models and our processes, and being able to then really target that Tier Two and Tier Three group and how we can support them. We did 19 full suicide risk assessments and 36 screeners from March until June. And then when you look at the entire school year, from August through June, we had a total of 150 with 100 screeners and 50 full suicide risk assessments. And some of this are repeated screeners. If you are a high risk, you may, again, be at a moderate or a low or be screened. But just really being able to be vigilant that anytime we hear reports of anything, we are going to gather that multidisciplinary team to be able to evaluate it. And again, we did inquire about dangerous instrumentality, including lethal weapons, 100% of the time. And so Dr. Reese last year had asked, and I was curious myself, is what does this look like from year to year? And so this is the data comparison for the elementary threat assessment. You're able to see, because we did not have the screening process as thoroughly in place as we do now, that data wasn't able to be shared for the last school year. Last year, the 2022-2023 school year was really getting the training and the foundational pieces so that this year, we were able to really dig into that screening process. So you can see having that screening process, taking that NTAC model screener, and then adding things like making sure we're notifying the right people. If we're not moving to a full assessment, why not? What are we doing instead? How are we supporting that child? Who are we contacting? What type of supports are in place? And Dr. Russell did a great job of showing with the Saber data is like the process. Although I like to say I'm bringing some black and white to a very gray process because even if there is a student who we're screening, we may still recommend that they need to go see someone outside of Oxford Community Schools. We may need to put some sort of safety plan in place. So with that understanding that we do have a process, but it's unique to the individual needs of the students. And this is the secondary threat assessment data comparison. And so in 22-23, in the yellow column, those were full assessments that were being done. And so that requires your multidisciplinary team questioning multiple students, teachers. Takes a lot of time. It takes hours. It takes days for things that may not be something that's threatening in nature. It could be school inappropriate. It could be concerning. It could just be something someone heard somewhere and we didn't have anything. So being able to screen that, but still collect that data to capture it, to keep track of the student's behavior is a huge piece. And then looking at suicide risk assessment, same thing. We did develop a rather robust screener so that was able to help our multidisciplinary teams stay focused on the task at hand. And as I've shared, we did have multiple different professions, experts in threat assessment throughout the country be able to look at this, whether it was districts that we've partnered with who've also experienced tragedy. Dr. Melissa Reeves has looked over this. I'm a member of the Association of Threat Assessment Professionals, so it's been looked over by a group there as well, just to make sure that we're really thinking through everything that we could. And then here is the secondary suicide risk assessment comparison. And then the final piece of data to share with you this evening is our And then the final piece of data to share with you this evening is our bullying investigation data, which is reported to the state. We did have a total of 36 investigations, 12 instances of bullying, 10 of those were at the high school, two of those were at Lakeville. Majority of those at the high school were based on cyberbullying. And so that is something that the high school administration and I have talked about of things that we can embed, whether it's posters throughout the school, advisory lessons, because the cyberbullying was what was really predominantly what was going on at the high school. And then additionally, there were 24 that were found to be not bullying.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Williman. I am here to update you regarding the areas of staff wellness and retention. The first goal in our ongoing recovery plan is to establish a culture of well-being that will provide employees the ongoing support and resources needed to be successful. So continuing the work, our wellness committee continued this work in 23, 24. That was a large component of our goal. Our committee worked tirelessly to provide monthly as well as building specific opportunities. And this work culminated on May 8th, 2024 with our second annual Staff Wellness Fair. You can see we had 110 staff attendees, 47 winners, and 28 vendors. I want to extend a very, a very heartfelt thank you to all of our community vendors for coming out, providing their booths and all of those prizes that were won by our employees. And we have 26 building well-being champions that were instrumental in making this work occur. Another component in our plan is increasing utilization of the EAP, so the Employee Assistance Program. And the data available to us thus far from Q1 is projected on the screen. You will see that we do have increased utilization. So for Q1, we had an annualized rate of 21%, and this is an increase over quarter four, which was at 11%. Over time, the 21% year-to-date is an increase over the same reporting period from one year prior, we were at 5.5%. Additionally, Aetna provided 11 days of onsite counseling for our staff and two training sessions in 23, 24. Next, you will see data from our Oxford Community Schools Pulse Survey. This was sent out to all staff first in October 2023 to help frame the work of the Wellness Committee. I'm going to advance to the next slide to show you our Pulse Survey from May 2024. So we asked six questions of our employees. It is very tiny, but the first question, I'm going to read it so everyone knows what we're looking at. "The district prioritizes my health and well-being. I am aware of resources available to manage stress and to support my mental health. I feel a sense of belonging in my workplace. Working at Oxford Community Schools gives me a sense of purpose." And next, "There are people at my workplace who genuinely care about me and my well-being. And finally, I am aware of the Employee Assistance Program and the type of help it provides." So we did have increased participation in May 2024, 29 more respondents. For questions one and two, we saw increased positive responses from staff. In questions one, two, three, and six, we saw decreases in the strongly disagree and disagree responses, so good trend there. And then questions four and five remained flat in both positive and negative responses, so that will help frame the work in 25, 24, 25 of the Wellness Committee. Objective one C of the ongoing recovery plan addresses our goal to inform and educate staff on being a trauma-informed workplace. Our monthly newsletter, HR newsletter, Thrive, has published 10 segments on trauma-informed workplaces in 23, 24. In total, we've published 14 issues, so I wanted to really lift this work up. This has been shared to every staff member via email. It's printed and on bulletin boards in every school to make sure it's accessible. Our first trauma-informed workplace segment was turned into a poster size and sent out to every building, so staff was aware. In addition, Thrive Monthly is just a passion project for the HR team. We love it very much. We've had staff spirit days every month and randomly selected winners of various prizes. We've promoted the EAP in every issue. We've also notified staff about flu shots, retirement seminars, benefits, updates, and resources, community vendors and opportunities, and other wellness initiatives. Another really great component of Thrive were the You Matter Moments. We've had 109 staff shout-outs submitted by Oxford Community Schools employees. So this is staff lifting up staff and the work that they do every day. We've had nearly 200 published photos of staff creating community through shared events. And we're just so proud that we are, the Wellness Committee is on the front lines working in their buildings every day to promote wellness, and our staff are lifting up their colleagues in this work, and it's shared out monthly as a positive resource with staff. So next, I'm moving into Goal Two in the ongoing recovery plan, which is to implement programs to remain competitive in order to attract and retain staff. The top two points on the slide are examples how we've implemented offerings this year going into the 24, 25 school year that give Oxford Community Schools a competitive advantage in a total compensation package. So you all are aware of Oxford Schools moving into the pool for insurance. This will offer four PPO options for staff, and the majority of staff in the main benefit class have two of those PPO options at zero cost. So there's no employee contribution for the health plan. That is huge in, in the healthcare world. Costs are going up. We were able to leverage our size in getting in with the pool to make sure there are efficiencies that we can turn over to staff and make sure that we're competitive when we're not only attracting new staff, but retaining the, the great educators and support staff we have here today. Supplemental life insurance is something that we've wanted to offer staff for a long time, and it's off the ground, so staff were able to purchase life insurance for themselves, their spouses, as well as their children. We received a lot of positive feedback from our staff for implementing that program, and we'll look forward in, into the next benefit year that starts on January 1, if there are other areas where folks feel there's a need to remain competitive. I will touch briefly on last year. We did also increase our dental coverage for staff to remain competitive within the education market for preventative services to be covered at 100%. And with the 22, 25 Oxford Education Association contract with the district, we did implement paid parental leave, which is huge. I still think we might be one of the only districts in the state that offers six weeks for new parents, whether they're adoptive or what have you. They get six weeks of paid leave, which is incredible and really a selling point when we are attracting new staff as well as retaining the talented staff we already have. And that will conclude our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was, that was a lot. I liked it. I'm not going to lie, it was a very pretty presentation. To the board, does anybody have questions?
I do. First off, thank you. I went over it, I mean, I think over the weekend, and I appreciate all the work that is clear that, that a lot of work has gone into this, this single presentation, so I appreciate all of you for putting that on. I guess I'll start as far as Christine. The early warning system. So let me find it again. So we see the percentages. Certainly, this is a snapshot in, in time. So, but we see this percentages kind of, I guess, it's hard to know what to compare to, right? If you're trying to compare. Like, we see this percentages kind of stay the same across the grades, maybe getting a little bit better for 11th and 12th. But how do we typically see as far as, I guess, the feel through the year? Kids like dropping out of that tier three and then some just moving in? Like, is it kind of just that continual kind of cycle as far as others filling in? I mean, I, it's something really not captured, I don't think, there.
I think it's an excellent question. The point in an early warning system, right, would be to identify these students and move them out of the need for intervention. Absolutely. So this was our first year really utilizing the system, and our counselors, our principals and vice principals, FSLs, are really getting used to looking at that data and using it to look holistically. For years, of course, we're always attending to these pieces. Like, when kids' grades are low, we've always enacted something. When kids aren't attending school, we've always enacted something. This is the first time that we're looking at it holistically. I'm looking forward to bringing you some of that data next year that shows how things have changed throughout the year. This year, we were, again, getting used to it. We changed our cut points a little bit throughout the year as well, because part of it was to make sure, are we really accurately using the right data to determine who's at risk and who's not? So a lot of this year was working with our mental health and our academic staff to determine, are we using the right indicators and the right flags? Because what we want these to be are something that even without the student saying anything, it's raising the hand for them, saying, "I need help in this area." And for some kids, "I need help in multiple areas." So what you're asking for is something that I'm looking forward to bringing you in the future as we get more used to this data, as we become experts in it right here within Oxford, and we have that type of data to be able to show you. So I don't have it quite yet, but we're, we're getting there. So the first thing this year was to respond, to see if our indicators were correct, to make any changes that we needed to, to it, and then, of course, always to be looking at some trends within what we already have.
Similar to that, you mentioned kindergarten come this year being a specific need.
Yep.
I noticed third graders were a little low on there as well. Is that, I mean, I guess the feel in the district, was that specific? Did it feel like it was specific to this class of third graders, or is that kind of a dip for third graders because of developmental differences or whatever? And how, how does that feel?
So having been in education for a long time, it is not, it's, it's common to have times where you have like a cohort of students that you're like, okay, this class is tougher than what we've seen in the last few years. What's exciting now, as we've become better and better in education and better with data, we not only have teachers saying like, whoa, there's something a little different with this class, we need a little bit more. We also have some data and information to be able to back that up. So as we maybe shift resources to a kindergarten, a fifth-grade teacher can also see that on a, on a graph and say, "I understand why kindergarten's getting a little bit more here. Makes a lot of sense. Please do that. Please have them in a better space by the time they get to fifth grade." So now your question is kind of the why. There's, we all have kind of theories about that. Like, is it that these, our current kindergartners were, were at home during COVID and not as, as interactive maybe in daycares as typical? And we can put some of those things out there, but I do also want to say that it's not uncommon to have a group that, okay, we're going to work a little harder here than maybe we did the year before. So I'm going to kind of stick with that for now and say that we're going to just use our data to be responsive, and we'll keep uncovering what these needs of kids are, because as kids come into us and we're getting to know them, we respond to what we see, and then the next year, we respond a little bit more. I'm excited to be able to show you growth throughout the year, but we also have to remember at elementary and at any grade level, for some kids, it can take multiple years to see that growth too.
That's why I'm looking forward to the data.
Me too.
Because that's one of the things, because third grade is that, that class of 2033 or whatever, that I've heard throughout either the district or even the county and even some, somewhat nationally, that's that, that's that class. And I've, I've mentioned this before in some more meetings. That's that class that COVID, like, that was their, like, their foundational years, right? In either kindergarten or around there, right? And so I, I don't know if that's, if that's really what's, what's happening here, but I just want to, it's good to have the data, and then we can kind of watch that data and understand it better.
It's good to have that data, and as a parent, we should just always be excited to know that people are aware and, and taking action. So I, my own children were in a grade level that their data, you, you could see it, they struggled, they were the loudest class, and all those different kinds of things. I wasn't ever worried about them because the school knew and was taking action, and the same thing here. We, we know that we have some kids that need a little bit more support and assistance, and they're getting that already. They've been getting that all year long.
Yes, please.
Specifically with the kindergarten group, I, I do think that there could be impact of, again, when they were born or what their very early childhood experience was, but Dr. Russell shared that at elementary, we introduced the elementary, or we had our FSLs trained in the cognitive behavior intervention therapy for the bounce back, yeah, for elementary kids, because some of the trauma that especially our kindergarten kids are coming in with is familial. Some of them are homeless. Some of the things that we're experiencing, I mean, we're experiencing some of these things at greater numbers than we have before with some of our younger students. So there is a greater impact on our students that, at least in my almost seven years here, have not seen before. So I, I think it's fair to say that that intervention was in response to what we're seeing from some of our youngest students.
And then Mike, I'm just want to go back real quick to, you're looking at the data and talking about some of those tier three kids, and do we move them back into tier two, and how do they cycle through? As you look at some of the assessment data that Dr. Williman even provided around suicide assessment and whatnot, when you're managing a mental health crisis or condition, oftentimes that's a process, and it's a long process that you manage over a period of time. So, so oftentimes, those numbers are repeated. It's the same youngster that might be struggling with a particular issue, and they're getting the help they need within school and outside of school, and, but it manifests itself at different times. And so we continue to track that, make safety plans, partner with those therapists in the community in order to support our students as best as we can in the school setting. Yeah, so they do cycle in and out, but a lot of times, you're just sustaining them there in order for them to be successful academically and building those partnerships and plans too. Any other questions?
Are we sticking with early warning, or are we jumping around? If anybody has any other questions in the top area, then maybe they can go now.
Okay. I did have one in that area. And I do just want to say again, thank you all. That was an incredible presentation. I had an entire page, and you eliminated most of it. So excellent, excellent job. Thank you for that. It was segmented, so I'm just curious if, if it was for a reason. The early warning system and the SABRs, are they treated differently for tier two and tier three when, you know, they show up in red? Or is it, is it the same path, but two different kind of screenings?
So we have a number of pieces of data that are within the early warning system. All of those pieces of data are being looked at already, prior to the early warning system being pulled together. The early warning system can be pulled together midsemester, end of semester. We can look at attendance data three weeks into the school year to see how attendance is going. We can look at grades, you know, four weeks into the semester to see who's behind. So things are being looked at already, so we do have a system in place for as soon as SABRs is collected, we're going to respond immediately. We're not going to let that data sit and wait until we put it into another system, until, we're going to immediately respond and make sure that any student who's waving that flag of social emotional needs has a response right away. Those pieces of data are then pulled together in an early warning system to have that holistic look, because if I have a concern in my social emotional functioning, but my grades are fine, I'm attending school, then I need that targeted intervention. But if, within this holistic look, if my social emotional is looking low because of SABRs, I'm also failing some classes, I'm also struggling to get to school, we really need to make sure that we don't have a targeted intervention, that tier two, that we have that student involved in a tier three intervention. And it takes pulling that all together in one place in an early warning system sometimes to see that. The person who's responding to discipline is often our dean. The person who's responding to attendance is our FSL. The person who's responding to grades is our counselor. They're all coming together as a team at times, but they're, they're doing their work that they need to be doing on a regular basis, and then this early warning system helps us just stop and check in. Is that student receiving an intervention, and is it matching the need when we look holistically? Does that help answer that?
It did. Thank you.
So a lot of that data is repeated in the early warning system, but we did want to spell it out separately, because there are also separate action items within the recovery plan. So SABRs is a standalone, and so is the early warning system.
Thank you.
It truly does take a team to do this, let me tell you. So the other thing that I would just really want to stress is that as we look at those numbers and tiered interventions for specific students, is a student isn't a tier one student, a tier two student, or a tier three student. You've got to look at that whole child, and every child has things that they're really good at, and they're that tier one where they're successful. And then there's other areas. It might be attendance, it might be focus, it might be their emotional growth or well-being, and those are areas that we need to focus on. But a child, the whole child doesn't fall into any one segment. We really want to look at children, where their strengths are, as well as where their needs are, and it varies by child. And so the more we can focus on that, we build those relationships with trusted adults, and it supports those children's in their strengths and in the areas of need. So it's important to recognize that.
Thank you.
All right. Mike, do you have more?
I think other people have more, yes.
Go ahead. Why don't you guys go first? I see the list.
All right.
From where I'm sitting.
It's not that bad, really. I'll just jump to Ryan real quick. For the For the employee assistance program, when the new insurance becomes effective in January, that does not change this, correct? We keep this?
Correct. Yes. AtNA is a standalone product, so it does not have any, the new insurance doesn't have any bearing on us offering the EAP.
Perfect. Thank you. And one more quick one. With the wellness committee and the poll survey, it seemed to me from the data that it was strictly staff that was surveyed. Were subcontractors, you know, transportation or subs or anything included in that or not?
So, it went out to everyone with an Oxford Schools email address and we did ask them to identify their building or maintenance, transportation, kind of their department. So, we do have it broken down for our committee to study and bring back to their individual teams. So, anyone who has an Oxford Schools email and all of our subcontractors do have one. So, they were included in that.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, so, Allison, with Raptor, I had the question if it was replacing Navigate 360 and it sounds like it is. So, are we still going to be on track with the timeline that we're at right now to have everything moved over into Raptor and all staff trained by school start? And have you already started moving the data? Is it working pretty seamlessly?
We have, we wanted to wait because we had a few that, a few cases within Navigate that needed to either remain open for the next school year or we had some ongoing finishing check-in meetings. So, we do currently have four open cases within Navigate that will transfer over, which everything else has been closed. So, then that process is going to start in July that we just start uploading. We're working with tech to be able to batch upload so that it's not a one. But everything's ready outside of those four because I was waiting to see where they were. And the four of those are suicide risk assessments that we want to monitor over the summer. We had something similar like that last year where we want to be able with the different offerings. We have SEL things. We want to be able to still provide that support and check-in so we didn't feel comfortable just closing those cases out because we're moving to a new system. Right now, we have, our first training will be set on July 31st and that will be for all administrators. And then, we have at least one mental health person from each building. We have three from the high school that will be coming and then two from the middle school to almost be that go-to as far as student safe goes. And then, I meet with Raptor again on Friday to set the next round, which we're looking at that first week. When they come back, we've found within secondary, a good chunk of time because that'll be able to allow us then to turn some of that around to some of our staff, but then continue to roll that out and then finish up because of the beginning of the year is so crazy. But we will have at least, at least bare minimum will be at least three people on each campus, which then, that's your required amount of members. And then, we have Dr. Amy Grosso who works with Raptor. She's also one of the senior consultants for Safe and Sound Schools. She is a counselor, so she'll finish up any mental health professional that we haven't been able to capture in that September training. So, I know I said I was going to get everyone trained, but when we sat down to look at what the beginning of the year looked like, it wasn't realistic without them getting here at six o'clock in the morning or staying really late. And I like to get up early, but there's only so much people can do and learn in 24 hours. So, it's almost a three-stage process right now. But that way, we capture everyone by September and we, our consultant lives in LaPierre, so is full well aware of who we are and the sensitive nature of what we're dealing with and is more than, and that's why they're agreeing not to just do virtual, like they're coming in and they're sending their best with them as well.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, as far as Daisy goes, where will she be stationed this coming school year?
At the high school.
At the high school?
Yes.
Great.
Because the handler was assigned to OES before, that's why she finished out the year at OES. And then, Ryan and Daisy will transition to the high school for the school year.
Great. And I know it wasn't in the presentation, but could you give a little status on the parent subcommittee, the safety subcommittee? I know the last update we had had was in that April and we got to meet some of them and they expressed some interest of newborn members because participation wasn't that great. So, is that happening? What's the process? And, you know, has there been any feedback from them?
So, part of, we were waiting a little bit because I needed to wait for Dr. Milligan to get here to see how she wanted to move forward with that committee. I do find value in that committee. We do have our first quarter meeting scheduled. It's the same day of our district safety committee. And part of what we'll be discussing is, I did speak in February about the Department of Homeland Security has a community action briefing. After we had our parent university with the okay to say, they did unfortunately show a very activating video. So, I want to vet anything with different subcommittees before we move forward. And so, we did offer that to our parent subcommittee. We did have a few and I've gotten feedback, but I haven't gotten enough to be able to say, I'm ready to schedule this. So, that's one of the topics we're going to discuss in August. Not that they're a decision-making body, but they are a good representation of our district. And so, being able to find out if that's something that's appropriate for our community because it is a two-hour virtual training. I did a similar thing that Homeland Security has one on behavior threat assessment and just a different concerning behavior and just a deeper dive into that. And I did my mental health subcommittee to go through that training. So, that is something we're looking to schedule for the next school year as an optional experience just to deepen our knowledge. So, it unfortunately wasn't able to happen in the spring just because after our parent university, I, people have to watch stuff before we push it out because I've watched the video that was shown, but it's a whole different lens once you've gone through what we have gone through. And so, just really being protective, but still wanting to bring that knowledge. So, that will be, that's the first thing I have on my agenda for August so that hopefully soon after, we can bring that training from Homeland Security forward. And again, that is a local person, so is aware of who we are and why and was full well willing to let us preview things before we release it to anyone.
Thank you. Last one, and I don't really have a direct question. I'm looking maybe more for some thoughts or feedback around the bullying issue. So, we just had the climate survey and around 50% of parents and students, you know, said that bullying is not tolerated and staff members are responsive when bullying is reported and the other half, not so much. And in last year's bullying survey, there was about 40% of middle school students who reported being bullied in the last, you know, couple of months. But the data, as far as the reports and investigations and then found bullying or not bullying, there seems to be a disconnect. And I just wanted to know if you have some thoughts on why?
And I think a lot of that is just around education of what bullying is and what bullying isn't. And are they in fact reporting it? You may say to your friend, but are you really going to your trusted adult? Are you really using the anonymous bullying feature? We've gotten anonymous bullying reports in April about something happened that in October, but didn't tell us who the aggressor was. And it's anonymous, so they don't have to share that it's them, but all they got was somebody said something to me at this place. There's not a lot I can even go on to even share. So, it is something we keep track of. And typically, when we get things like that, it's just, hey, keep an eye out for this kid that may frequent this. I don't want to give away like anonymous reporting, but really just trying to be intentional then about how are we being proactive of really educating what bullying is and what it isn't? And is it because we engage in some sort of fight, but she's Snapchatting me things and I'm Snapchatting her back, but I'm going to call that bullying even though we're both engaging in something? And letting us know on our level so that we can use our restorative practices, use our counselors, our FSLs and really bring, again, looking at the whole child and what that relationship is and not necessarily because I feel I'm getting picked on, but I'm also then engaging. So, how do we problem solve that to be able to not, I don't have to be, and nothing against Ryan, she's just right here. I don't have to be best friends with the person, but how do we work together or just exist in the same environment together? So, that's going to be a lot of, like I said, the high school had a lot of cyber bullying. That was predominantly what their instances of bullying are. So, how can we embed that proactively? Whether that's through our partnership with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office who has some really good presentations on that. But within our advisory and just different, even if it's posters or just working with Christie for different things that we can push out to be proactive and again, see something, say something. Like, we want, I would rather have something happen to me in November somewhere and that at least gets us like aware of it than not having it reported at all. And if there is something, if you feel you've reported something, whether you're a student or a kid and it's not, you don't feel it's been addressed, reach out to the campus administrator, report it again, contact me. We'll look into it.
I agree that I think it's a discrepancy between definition and reporting.
Right. And if you don't mind, I just want to add, the definition, the legal definition is that it has to have harm, an unfair match and repetition, right? And we do train on this. We have a module in vector, vector courses and it goes through what is bullying, what isn't bullying. And it gives scenarios. So, for example, you know, a group of girls in middle school, one girl isn't invited to a sleepover and the girls are ha, 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 they don't get to go. Is that bullying or is it girls being mean versus a larger student pushing a smaller student down on a regular basis? Is that bullying? So, it gives some really good scenarios and I think it is helpful to clarify what Allison just said.
Thank you. So, it sounds to me, you know, that the students don't quite have the same definition of bullying as the adults and that's mainly where it's coming from.
Probably and/or not reporting it.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that really is a key because we've even expanded, Bridgette and I, last year with getting that anonymous reporting option on every student's Chromebook and making sure that parents are aware that they could fill those out as well. And so, it's really a matter of what we hear through different venues. And I do get emails and I've had people at board meetings that I've met with afterwards that have reported things and then followed up afterwards. But utilizing the systems that we've really expanded in order to collect that information and respond to it appropriately is really important. And that does take time to get those systems ingrained in our culture where people understand this is how you access these supports. The anonymous component is challenging though. Because when you have an anonymous reporting document, it's really hard to follow up on that. Sometimes it creates an awareness, but sometimes the details aren't available in order to follow up directly, unfortunately.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mike, did you have more questions?
I've got two more, I think, both for Allison. As far as, so I was looking at the suicide risk assessment for the secondary level and at OHS, I know it's not an apples to apples with the 22, 23 to 23, 24 because of the addition of the screener. But coming from like 69 cases, I'll say, to 91 cases, if you combine the screener with the full, I just want to know, is that, is our threshold a little bit different or are we seeing, I mean, because that's a bit of an increase certainly as far as percentage-wise. So, I just wanted to kind of understand that jump, if it's not, if it's just not apples to apples or?
I think with a lot of the programs and education we're bringing in, the net's getting cast wide because it's not just teachers reporting. Kids are reporting and they're concerned about their friends. And I would much rather see that we're screening 63 of them because that means our kids are taking what trainings that have been provided and they're like, that doesn't sound right. I need to tell someone. So, what I think is really important is looking at that 28. And I know we don't have that valid comparison because of not having the screener in place, but I would rather cast a high net every day when it comes to something like suicide risk because we can have all the systems in place, but sometimes it takes someone going to their counselor and saying, I'm really concerned about Allison. She just, she kind of said this. And then, having that conversation and opening that door to really develop that relationship and find connectiveness with those students. So, I don't have a clear answer for you on it and I don't know because that's your world, but that's my side.
Can I? Actually, I wanted to, Mike, so, and keep me honest on this, Allison, when we're looking, it's 63 screeners total, but out of those 63, 23, or excuse me, 28 turned up, or they're two separate?
No, they're compounding.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so there were, those 28 may have started as, those 28 may have started as screeners or they may have presented information that from the get-go, the team said we're going to full, but we wanted to keep that separate so we're not overlapping any of that information. So, same as with the threat assessment, those are true screeners versus full assessment because sometimes we do have to go through a screener on either side and then we say, mm, we better go to a full or we know from the get-go, we better do a full. And so, we wanted to honor that and keep those numbers separate.
And I do think, because we're reviewing the recovery plan, the National Center for School Safety really consulted with us heavily early on as we were developing the recovery plan. And they really encouraged us to grow the capacity around suicide awareness amongst our students. And even over the last year or so, we've gotten a lot of feedback regarding the validity of the Sabers assessment with our students. And some of them are kind of making light of it and whatnot. And so, by training our students in question, in QPR, question, persuade and refer, it creates that next layer where peer-to-peer reporting has probably increased. It's creating that awareness and it's another layer in order to support our kids that are reaching out. Even as I monitor our gaggle and go guardian incidents, we oftentimes respond with students, communicating with students on district networks or on devices where we capture they're looking at, you know, either harming themselves or someone else. And we follow up on that as well. So, we've got many layers in order to support and that data represents that, I think.
I think my last one. The survey for the end-of-year security, safety, security survey, so that was given to the, our safety and security teams? That's correct?
Yes, at each campus.
How is that audited? Like, so they, I mean, like I can say that, like I know our policy by the back, like, you know, the back of my hand, but it's one thing to say it, obviously.
So, partially what we do during those meetings is we have different themes. And so, one of them, we did an Alice Drillthers cards that we had. And so, it was, okay, here's the situation. What do you do now? And it's almost the pop quiz, like I don't even know what the cards are going to say. It's going to say, oh, you have an A card? What does your A card have? Oh, let's look at the L card. What does the lockdown card say? And they have to answer it in that moment. And then, part of the auditing process as far as like their knowledge of threat assessment and suicide risk assessment is really going into what they have within the system and the threat assessment and the suicide risk assessment themselves. And are you following through what it is? Or are you trying to check the box and just say, stuff written here? Or are you actually getting through? And part of that was working through that and taking the same example we had in our training. And I built that as an exemplar within the model so that they could see in our system on our paperwork. And I'll do the same thing with student safe so that they have something they've already worked through. And we baby stepped with that one for part of our meetings, but then they're also able to see this is what the exemplar should look like. And we constantly, like, I'll go back to, in this policy? Or I'll say, what policy is that? Where do we have this information? So, being able to embed that, things like reasonable suspicion, Trune has done an excellent opinion on that with the Michigan Association of Secondary Principals. And so, we'll say, okay, where is that? Show me this. And that's part of what, as much as it is about collaboration and bringing some of it is, that pop quiz time. What are we doing here?
Those meetings seem incredibly valuable. I just wanted to confirm, they will still continue into next year? That's your plan?
Yes. And I'll be working with Dr. Russell and Ms. Bittner as well so that we're able to really look at the entire gamut of emergency management because it's not just the response piece, it's not just the physical security side. We also have to look at responsive recovery. We also have to look at MTSS and how that plays into it, which is why, a big reason why I refer to that in tiers as well because within MTSS, you have behavior. And at the core of any suicide risk assessment or threat assessment is a child in crisis. So, how are we supporting that child? What are we looking at with attendance? Behaviors, our discipline write-ups? What is going on in these classes? And really focusing that on personalizing those plans because it's not just my department, it's all of our departments to be able to do this. Thank you.
Allison?
Okay, before we go though, this is very important because we all stood up here and presented and really they did most of it. I do think it's important to thank Christie because she's the rock star behind that presentation. So, thank you, Christie.
Yeah. Do appreciate that. And thank you to all of you guys. It's been an incredibly tough couple of school years and just the amount of information that you guys gave us, I think, I didn't look at the time when we started, but it was very comprehensive and I appreciate it immensely. very comprehensive, and I appreciate it immensely. All right, moving through the agenda, item number B is the Drainer Property Update. Dr. Milligan?
All right, so our property at 775 Drainer Road will be known as, and this is going to be its official name, the Oxford Education and Innovation Campus, also known as OEIC. So when we refer to OEIC, it's referring to that property, all right? We are going to be focused on moving groups of student there towards the, or setting up for receiving students towards the end of July, beginning of August. That includes OVA, Bridges, and Loft students. We will also be looking at moving our tech teams and several other teams to that location, hence the education and innovation. So, because of the fire, there was cascading events that were taking place for abatement as well as finalizing the project, so they're essentially flying two planes at once, trying to figure out how to land them both. And pursuant to Policy 6320, which gives the superintendent authority to make emergency purchases without prior approval, I did make two approvals last week in order to continue the work and ensure that we are ready to receive students. So the first was for ceiling tiles. All of the ceiling tiles were in the facility prior to the fire, and they received severe water damage and had to be replaced. When you put tiles in, it creates a tremendous amount of dust, so we have to do that before we paint, right? Because if we have dust and then we put paint on it, it's not going to work very well. The second emergency approval was for the paint itself, to complete the paint, so that we can finish the rest of the projects and stay on our timeline. So they were two emergency approvals so that the process could continue forward efficiently and make sure that we had our students, ready to receive students towards the, in August, but getting everything finalized towards the end of July, beginning of August. So I am bringing that to the board's attention.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Great. All right. Anything else for a superintendent's report? All right, going on to item number six, Board of Education Matters. We have a couple items in the packet. The first one is our MHSAA Membership Resolution. This is a voluntary membership for the Michigan High School Athletic Association. It has to be renewed annually. We actually don't need to vote on this tonight, if you guys want to wait, otherwise, there is a motion in the packet. This is something that we do do every single year for our athletic teams, so, any questions? All right. Do you want to make a motion tonight?
I'm okay with that, I can make a motion.
Sure. Move to approve the MHSAA Membership Resolution for the year, August 1, 2024 through July 31, 2025, as presented. Do I have support? Mike? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Also in the packet is the recommendation that we continue our membership with the Michigan Association of School Boards, also known as MASB, where we get a lot of our education, some board legal advice, and other items in terms of how to run open meetings and whatnot. So, can I get a motion to approve that? Amanda?
Thank you. Move to approve Oxford Community Schools Board of Education's continuing membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards for the 2024-2025 school year at a cost of $9,594.58, based on student enrollment, as presented.
And do I have support? James? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next up on the agenda is the bank depositories and signatures for bank accounts. We had to have this on our agenda anyways, for Dr. Milligan, as she's new, but also due to the vacancy of the treasurer, our policy calls for it to default to the president until we select a new treasurer, which we will do when we have a full board again, because we have 30 days to do that. So, we will read each motion, and then there'll be a roll call vote for each item under this section. So, I will go ahead and read the first one, since Amanda just read the last two. So, "I move to improve the general fund and debt retirement checks for the 2024 calendar year to be listed and approved by the board. They will be signed by using the signature plate engraved with the names Tanya Milligan and Erin Reese." Do I have support? Amanda? Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, James?
McDonough?
Yes.
Whitney?
Yes.
Summers, yes. Reese?
Yes. All right, the next one, move that all payroll, internal accounting, and school lunch checks be signed for the 2024 calendar year by using the plate engraved with names Tanya Milligan and Erin Reese. Have support? Amanda? Any discussion? Roll call vote, James?
Whitney?
Yes.
Summers, yes. McDonough?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes. All right. Under the next item, as you may have been listening to Amanda and the policy committee over the last few minutes discuss our transition of policies from the current vendor, which is Neola, to Trune, we have a resolution to enact those policies effective July 1st. The total resolution was in the packet, for those who had a chance to read it in full disclosure, otherwise, I'll take a motion to move. James?
Move to the resolution to repeal, replace the board policies as presented.
Do I have support? Mike? Any discussion?
I just want to quickly say, they will be in effect as of, once we do that, not July 1st, we were just aiming for July 1st as our bye date, so just to prevent any confusion, they will be effective now.
Effective tonight?
If roll call passes.
Tomorrow.
Gotcha.
That is not what the resolution states.
I think it's July 1st.
Yeah, it's July 1st on the resolution that's in there. So we start the enactment date of July 1st, that's what is in the resolution part.
Oh, I didn't have that on mine, right here, under five. Okay, I take that back. We will pass it tonight, and it'll be good July 1st.
That'll work. It's an easy, clean cutoff date for a lot of individuals. I do want to thank Amanda, and obviously, Dr. Markovich isn't here anymore to thank her, but there was an enormous amount of work that went into comparing Neola policies to Trune policies, to see if there was any modifications that needed to be, and I also thank in advance Dr. Milligan and the cabinet for all the AGs that they now have to align under all of the new policies, because I know it's an enormous amount of work, but I think we've had a lot of positive feedback on Trune. Their language is clear, it's easier to understand by the layperson as well as by the administrator to make their actions needed based on the policy. So thank you. I know it was a lot of work and a lot of time. Roll call vote, James?
Whitney?
Yes.
Summers, yes. McDonough?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes. All right, great. Next item under Board Business is the 2023-2024 Superintendent Evaluation. We met in two closed sessions to create that evaluation, and I'll take a motion, it was in the packet. James?
Move to approve the superintendent's evaluation for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Can I get support?
No, no.
Mike? Any discussion? I will just say in general about this, that there's a new evaluation tool that comes out in July under law, and so will we be attending another training to learn what the next evaluation tool will be looking like, actually, I think on July 10th, once the new board is set as well, and where we will set goals, and they will be clear, so evaluation will be more streamlined moving forward. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number seven, Finance and Operations. Courtney?
So, the first couple items, I think you guys are just doing a motion to approve the final amended and the 25 proposed, is that correct? Or am I doing this first?
Yes. Yep. Sure is. Can I get a motion for the final amended budget? Amanda?
Move to approve the 2023-2024 final amended budget for the capital projects, childcare, debt retirement, food service, sinking, and student activities funds as presented.
And support? James? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'll go ahead and make the motion for the other one. Move to approve the 2024-2025 proposed budget for capital projects, childcare, debt retirement, food services, and student activity funds as presented. And support? Amanda? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Drainer, parking lot.
All right, so, part of the Drainer renovation, the OEIC renovation, trying to get used to that, is we have to redo the parking lot to be able to have enough spaces for all of the people that are going to occupy the building. So in your board packet, you have the original bid from Birmingham Seal Coat that we did an RFP in spring, I believe it was March or April. We only had one bid, the bid came in at $612,000-ish dollars. We quickly realized that that was out of the budget, so they went back to the drawing table, IDS helped us value-engineer the drawing down, and we were able to revise it to get it down to more of what our expectation was for the budget to be. So you also have in the board packet a letter from IDS with some of the revisions based off of the original RFP bid, and how we got down to that $320,000. So some of the items that they did was, they took, originally, the bid had come in with 98 parking spaces, they took it down to 50. That was to kind of right-size for the occupancy that we expect to have at the building, the 98 was a little more than was necessary, so we were able to get that down and bring the cost down. They reduced some of the drainage, the restoration, the original bid had that they were going to restore some of the surrounding grass area, we're going to leave it as-is for now. They changed some of the parking light lights, they removed, the original bid had conduit and electrical ran for future cameras and lightings, they removed that, so if we ever want to add cameras in the future, we would have to either look at, I believe Andrea said, maybe there might be wireless options at that point, or we would have to run electrical as well. And I think that was all that I had. So this is just a visual of what it was in the original bid, and then what it's down to now with the bid that we are asking for you to approve. I do have Andrea from IDS, who's the architecture company, and Tim from Birmingham Seal Coat, who is the company that submitted the bid. If you have any questions, they're here to give me some backup.
All right, does anybody have any questions? We're not voting on this tonight, it's just for us to review. James?
So with the amendment and downsizing, if you will, I guess wording to that, are we, do we have to put it back out to rebid for that, for other stuff? I know Birmingham was the only one that did the original one, but that we're changing the scope of the project and looking to change, I mean, it's more than just, you know, removing a couple of lights, I mean, it's a fairly big change to it, and it's cutting Birmingham's almost by half and stuff, but I didn't know, do we, should it be rebid or set out there for bids again?
I am not positive on that. I was told that we did not need to rebid it, because it was a downsize and not upgrading it. Am I misspeaking on that?
No, I think the other factor is time, that the district funding reports that this can be in place for the building opening, and if it's to be rebid, it would add two or three months of that schedule.
Understand. I just make sure. Okay?
If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Milligan, when we were speaking about this, I looked up the new Trune policy correlating to this, and we did verify that a rebid was not needed, correct?
Yeah. Good. So we're on the same page with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, no.
All right. I do, oh.
So, to confirm, the conduit and the power for future cameras was taken out, are we still covered from a security standpoint with outdoor cameras on the new bid?
Yeah, so the, from my understanding, the conduit that was being ran was not, we were not installing cameras, because what we have in here is sufficient for the security needs, and we would be able to have all areas covered. The original bid had it as for future, if we decided that we wanted to add more, we would already have the electrical and conduit ran, and we wouldn't have to do that in the future.
And we also will have cameras on the building towards the parking lot. They won't be in the parking lot, but they'll be covering the parking lot. It's the back of the parking lot, we won't have the best coverage, but we'll still have it covered as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
And note, the scope also includes approving a walkway, you can kind of see the sidewalk coming out of the bottom of the corner, and that will connect the lot to the building. Where you see the yellow highlights is where the lighting will be, so that walk will be illuminated at all times when needed.
Good, thank you.
Connected to the building, for security and safety reasons.
I'm actually meant to ask for a map over the weekend, so this is kind of helpful. Where exactly is this, though? I'm trying to get my bearing.
Exactly, I wanted to...
Oh, I was probably looking here, sorry. I was definitely looking here, so I didn't have this. I know where that is.
It's quasi impractical, that's the area of work. You can see today, there was an asphalt lot there years ago, and so that's what the original scope was, to restore the entire lot, and that's why we're scaling that due to money. But that was the original blueprint.
And that's why originally we went with the 98 spaces, was because it was to renovate what was there.
What was there.
Right.
No, I guess when, where are, if we do it the way we're talking about with the 300, roughly $300,000 one, what does that transition point look like between what's left of the lot here? So, I mean, I don't know if we'll have any events that will spill over, but I'm well aware of our elementary schools and such, in which we just park everywhere, right?
Right.
I mean, and so, this would be, this would be a spot where you can park, and maybe it's not a finished, current parking lot, but it's better than parking on the grass or on a curb or on the sidewalk.
So, Tim, are they, are we ripping out the asphalt that's currently there, or are you putting it on top?
We're going to rip that out, and then the top edge of the parking lot, that goes kind of parallel level with the bottom of the garage, will be, have two curbs, so it'll be a high back, so you can't drive over it.
Okay.
That will keep people naturally delating off of that, you know, native soil that we're going to leave there and fill.
Okay.
If people decide to drive on it, it's up to them, I'm not going to say it's going to be fine, they won't get stopped, but there's a lot of other places to, obviously, park as well on this larger site.
And that's where the restoration number came through, so we're removing that existing and only saving half, so the existing other half will be restored by the district, as far as CD and...
Okay. Okay.
And then for the future, if we, if it does grow and we do decide that we want to go back to 98 spaces and expand on the lot, this won't be such a big cost difference between, you know, you won't have to redo the entire thing, right?
There'll be less to do, at that point, we just cut that line of curb off and...
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Anything else? Awesome. Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you, guys, for coming and hanging out all night with us, too. We appreciate you.
There was a lot of...
It was, but it was a good one.
Not first, but earlier.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, we have Unscheduled Public Comment next. Kelly's bringing me the card. Thank you, ma'am.
I was looking here, and she must have... I didn't see her. And then I asked her over the weeks.
All right. First up is Marissa Prince.
Hi, guys, good evening. On Saturday, I attended the Third Annual No Future Without Today Walk or March to End Gun Violence and the rally they had. It was held by current and former students who organized it. The focus from a lot of the speakers was on gun legislation and gun safety, but Tate's dad spoke, and I wrote a little summary of some of what he said that I wanted to share with the board. He said, "We still do not have answers on November 30th because Guide Post's investigation scope was narrow and staff wasn't required to participate. While failures were exposed, the state isn't recognizing it, and we want a full investigation, which is being prevented by the school board and the insurance company who is prioritizing money over student safety." money over student safety." He then asked the community to email all of you and legislators to ask for a bipartisan commission to investigate, simply so we can drive change and keep students safe. He explained that the families of the victims have been fighting hard at the state level, and they, they've been turned away, and that they feel that they need accountability. They're asking for the full story and subpoena power by the committee. He also talked about 42 Strong, that they do frequent student check-ins with their members, and it's a sliding scale using emojis about how the students are doing. And then they target personal interventions to anyone who's flagged using that system. And he talked about something similar to the early warning system that we saw tonight. The only difference was he did mention including participation in activities as something that could be viewed and included in that system. So is the student active in any sports, clubs? Are they, or are they withdrawing? So that's an idea that, that I got from him when he spoke. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Erskine?
Good evening. I had another parent call and ask me to come. My schedule hadn't allowed me until now, and this was when school was still in session. So it'd been a while. Her daughter had not been able to come to school for about three weeks prior to that last week of school, and she didn't know who else to turn to. We're not the best of friends or anything like that. Our daughters were in a after, like, after sports school thing together the year prior. So like, like, not super buddy-buddy, I guess is what my point is. And she didn't know who else to turn to because she felt the school had failed her. And so she's like, "I know you go to school board meetings. Can you help me out?" So as a last resort, she sent me a Facebook message. Because her daughter hadn't been able to go to school. She had some, and she told me to come and share this. So this is why I'm here. She's a junior. And the last three weeks prior to this incident, her daughter would drive to school and sit outside, not being able to go into that building. And on this particular day, she was finally able to go inside the high school, which is this huge accomplishment. Her mom was so freaking proud of her. So she calls the attendance office and like, "Hey, just so you know, my daughter made it in the building." You would think that the attendance office would be excited. She was not because the daughter decided to go to a classroom that had the therapy dog and not her first. It was on a Wednesday, so they had the late, late start. Not the first class
First period.
First spell, but not first spell. You know what I'm talking about. So this attendance office, and we've heard, fuck, I'm going to run out of time. This attendance office went into this building and yelled at this student who's already has 504s, 503, IEPs, who hadn't been able to set foot in this, in this school for the last three weeks, yelled at her, had her in tears. And we've heard Allison say how all the staff is trained and trauma-informed. What made her think it was a good idea to go and cause more trauma to the student? And so she called it and left emails to the principal and everyone else, and she still hasn't gotten an answer. And how long have you been out of school now? This can't, this, that is not trauma-informed behavior on the school's part. This is not the way we need to be treating our parents. And this is why a lot of parents still don't trust the school, because we're saying we're trauma-informed, but our actions and the implementation is not there.
Thank you, Carol.
Yeah.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our scheduled events. We do have a special meeting on July 8th that will be for the school board candidate selection, interviews, and appointment. Then we will have a regular board meeting on 9th, and then the board workshop on the 10th. So very busy week. With that, any administrative clarification, Dr. Milligan?
I just want to reiterate and add that I will be at Aris Bookstore tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:00. And on July 11th, I will be at the Oxford Library for Storytime at 11:00 AM and invite all community members to join me.
Under the next item is Final Board Comments. I did want to say, in terms of board applications, originally, we had requested that the community turn in board applications on the 26th. I would like to propose the board, make sure no one is against, but I would like to extend the date. Originally, we thought we would meet the week of 4th of July. We have sent that now for July 8th as our meeting, so we could extend the date for board applications to July 3rd, if everybody's okay with it. But I do, would put a time on that because the board office closes for the holiday weekend. So at 4:00 PM, July 3rd would be the updated deadline. Is there any naysayers in the group of that? I think we're all probably on board with that. Good. All right. Any other final board comments? All right, meeting is adjourned, 8:27 PM. Thanks for coming.